A pledge? I pledge to the United States of America and to their policy for which we stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our collective plan, I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, to the Constitution, to one nation under God, one in the middle.
Thank you very much. We're getting much, much better at the pledge, right? Uh, moving on to roll call, uh, Mr. Paris called that he will not be attending tonight. He sent his apologies and, uh, Mr. Lehman is, uh, on his way here. Moving on to item five, recommend approving the agenda of the regular board meeting of December the fourth, two thousand seven, with any corrections or deletions, Mr. Gonzalez.
Uh, no corrections or deletions as submitted.
Great. I have motion to approve the agenda as submitted. Motion by Mr. Lehman, seconded by Mr. Cortez. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item six, recommend approving the minutes of the regular board meeting of November twentieth, two thousand seven, with any corrections. Are there any corrections to the minutes of November the twentieth? If not, I have motion to approve. Motion by Mrs. Galvane, seconded by Mr. Cortez. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item seven, Superintendent's Report, A Conference Presentation, one, Quarterly Investment Report, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Dr. Scuero, members of the board. Uh, this is for your information. You have any questions, we'll be glad to answer.
Questions that comes from the board, Mr. Lehman.
What is the total gain in interest this year?
So far this year, uh, it's the, it's a quarterly report.
Yes.
I believe it's somewhere in the, in the neighborhood of about, uh, four million dollars. We're getting about five percent on our return on our investment.
And what's the estimated gain?
Sure.
The estimated gain for the year?
Depending on, on what we, we cover throughout the year, but if you, if you do this, you're probably looking anywhere from ten to twelve by the time it's all over because a lot of times we, we take out money and we won't get, gain as much, but we gained it during the summer.
That's money we didn't have.
No, we, we budgeted some of it.
Oh, how much?
Uh, Mr. Sanchez?
Uh, board members, about eight million.
About eight million.
Uh, the bulk of the, the bulk of the interest that is being earned is, uh, is the bond money that we have invested till when we show, uh, a big gain on the interest, it's you're gonna see that, that, that a hundred and thirty-five million dollars in there is the one that, that's really generating a lot of revenue. So, we gotta keep separated. But remember, the, the bond money has that arbitrage, four, four seventy-one, so we can't invest it any higher than that because we gotta give it to the IRS.
So, what's gonna be the net gain, more or less? What's the estimated net gain?
For...
So, about ten, about ten.
On, on MBA, on, and the investments on the bond, yes.
About ten.
I mean, on the, the full amount of, of money that we have. So, we'll have about two million.
We, we, we can certainly budget about eight, so we should have about two left over.
Any other questions or comments? Is our volume okay? Can you all hear us in the back? I, I, I can tell that it's low. Can you all hear us clearly?
No.
No? Our volume is too low, so if someone could look into it, please.
Can't hear you, huh?
Moving on to item two, Quarterly Overtime Report, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Dr. Scuero. Once again, uh, this report is, uh, for board members to see about how much we're spending on overtime. Is there any questions? We'll be glad to answer.
Questions that comes from the board, Mrs. Galvane?
Yes, I did notice that, uh, there was a, a lot of overtime paid to transportation and to maintenance, which is, of course, I know we have, uh, projects and maintenance and also transportation ish, uh, things that come up. But, do we need no, more people to work, uh, in these departments?
Uh, not really. Um, uh, when we get down to it, uh, the, the mainest department usually is because they, they occur on areas that we need to. Uh, a lot of it was done for summer work, painting things that we needed to do. Uh, as far as transportation, it's always gonna be there. Um, they, they put in their forty hours on the regular routes most of the time, and then we have all kinds of activities going on throughout this district, a very large district. So, every ball game, everywhere we go, all the extracurricular and co-curricular activities require overtime, and, uh, it would not behoove us to hire more drivers because we would not have anything for them to do on the regular routes because we have an established number of buses. So, we'd have to buy more buses if we were going to do that. So, uh, basically, the overtime for transportation is basically unavoidable. For maintenance, uh, we do better with a little overtime here and there than it is to hire new people, additional people.
Any other, Mr. Lehman?
And following up on that question on, on, on bus, transportation, I, I noticed that, uh, I was out last night, I didn't know that the parade was on, but we had a lot of our buses, so, uh, we participate in the parade, I, I take it.
Yes, sir.
So, does, does that constitute overtime or?
Yes, sir.
Because we were not invited to be in the parade, uh, yeah.
It, it, it's not our parade, but we can certainly be in the parade.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we move on to item three, Early College High School, uh, program, a collaborative effort between BISD and UTB TSC, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Dr. Scuero, members of the board. This is a, we've been looking forward to this for a long time, and we've basically finally put it all together. It's very interesting what we're gonna be doing with the, uh, early college high school. Uh, it's a program that, uh, administration strongly recommends to the board, and before we go forward with it, we would like to have a, a presentation to you also to know exactly which way we're going, and calling Dr. Cavazos to do that.
Superintendent Gonzalez, Dr. Scuero, and members of the board, we are very excited about bringing you this item, bringing this item forward to you. It's, as Doctor, uh, Mr. Gonzalez, uh, articulated, is about affecting the lives of, of youth, affecting the lives of kids. Early College High School will help youth go not only through freshman and sophomore year, but will also help them, uh, award them an associate's degree after they get out, uh, and graduate from high school. We do have a presentation, uh, for you today that will be done by, uh, the Administrator for Advanced Academics, Merrill Hammond, and also, we also have, uh, from the University of Texas Brownsville Partner and Liaison, uh, Dr. Fawcett here in the audience, uh, showing her support, uh, in this collaboration. Again, Mr. Hammond?
Thank you, Dr. Cavazos. Uh, Board President Escuero, Superintendent Gonzalez, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen of the audience. Uh, I'm very happy to be here to talk to you this evening about the, uh, Early College High School. Uh, as you've already heard, this is gonna be a collaborative effort between Brownsville ISD and the University of Texas at Brownsville. Uh, the goals and purpose of this high school will be to serve students who are underrepresented in higher education by providing them with a comprehensive support system that will help them to develop their academic skills, social behaviors, and the opportunities that are necessary for post-secondary success, not just success at the high school, but also once they leave the high school. Uh, at the same time, we're gonna be placing these students on a path that will lead them, as, uh, Dr. Cavazos already has told you, where they will be able to graduate with a high school diploma as well as an associate's degree. Uh, the targeted, targeted population for this, uh, high school is a little bit different from what you normally, uh, hear for these schools. We're looking for students who are low socio-economic. Uh, most of these students will probably be first-generation college, uh, students. In other words, no one in their family has attended college before. We're looking for students who are in the academic middle. This is not aimed for your top, uh, students. Uh, these students also will possess an aptitude for college success, but they may be lacking the school, the, uh, the skills, the motivation, maybe even the vision to, uh, even see college as a possibility for themselves. So, uh, hopefully with this school, they will see that and they will pursue, uh, not only the associate's degree, but their, uh, their college degree. Uh, it's gonna be open, uh, gradually over a four-year process. Uh, the first year, we'll be shooting for a hundred students. We're looking to, uh, target twenty students per cluster in BISD. Uh, at the end of four years, we'll have a total population of four hundred students. Uh, the design of the school, as I've already mentioned, will be, uh, it's gonna be a collaborative effort between BISD and, uh, UTB TSC. The school will be housed at UTB, but it will be governed by BISD. Uh, we hope to be utilizing innovative approaches to scheduling, uh, because they'll be doing mostly during their freshman and sophomore year, it'll be, uh, courses for high school, and then when they move into their junior and senior year, this is when they really go into their, uh, dual enrollment courses and working toward that associate degree, and those courses will be taken mostly at UTB with UTB professors. Uh, also, uh, innovative approaches to the personnel that we will use at the campus, to the curriculum, to budgeting, and also professional development. Uh, initial funding, uh, for the school is gonna, uh, be in the form of a grant. Uh, we've basically been offered a grant of fifteen hundred dollars per student for four years, which comes out to be six hundred thousand dollars over the four-year period. Uh, also, there's a possibility of additional grant funding of five hundred dollars per student over the four-year period, which is, uh, an additional two hundred thousand, and this money will be used for technology for the campus as well as staff development. Uh, UTB and TSC, as I've already mentioned, will provide the facilities, the electricity. Uh, we will be providing the transportation, textbooks, meals, staffing, et cetera, et cetera. Of course, we're in the beginning stages of planning this. There are always other issues that we have to resolve. Uh, some of those issues are the professional development for the staff, uh, curricular support, uh, budget for the campus, uh, tuition, and the possibility of waivers from UTB. Of course, we want this to be sustained past the four years of the, uh, grant, and then also extracurricular issues so that students can have a well-rounded education, not just an academic one. Basically, that is where we are, uh, at this point. You have, we have the support of UTB. Dr. Garcia has already signed off on it. Uh, our next step is for Mr. Gonzalez to sign off on it, and then we can start the final plans and, uh, for, uh, initiating this school. And like we said, we hope to have it going by the two thousand eight, two thousand nine school year.
Any questions?
Mr. Mr. Aguilar?
Uh, Mr. Gonzalez, I think it's a wonderful program we're gonna have. I want to express my congratulations to BISD in going to this type of direction. Whatever you need, Mr. Lehman, to get it going, I'm pretty sure the board would approve it. It's a wonderful thing for our school district and our kids.
Mrs. Galvane?
Uh, does UTB at this time have a high school?
Uh, yes, I believe they do, but it's, uh, if I'm correct, it's a math, science, technology, and it's aimed at like the top one percent of the population. So, this is gonna be a totally different population.
Yeah, I just, uh, think it's something fantastic that is coming about. Congratulations, uh, Mr. Gonzalez on this. Also, um, are you gonna have, uh, principal openings and staff openings, right? Like counselors and, are we gonna name it?
Uh, well, what we're gonna be doing, if I may, Dr. Scuero, is we're gonna be working this. It's collaborative move between ourselves and the university, and, and we're very grateful the university has joined this effort, and what we're gonna be doing is, this is going to be, uh, at the ITech Center. We will be able to, to, we're still debating as to whether we're gonna name it as a school or give credit back to the high schools on this concerning, uh, some. One thing we are going to be involved is, is that the students will be able to participate in UIL activities, and what we're gonna do is assign them back to their home campus for UI, to, UIL activity purposes to their own schools. That way, they wanna participate in the band, they'll be able to participate in the band. They wanna participate in any co-curricular, extracurricular activities, athletics, whatever, they'll be able to do that. The hours will probably be different than from regular high school. We'll probably start them earlier in order to for, afford them the opportunity to come in the afternoon to their home campus and participate in all activities at their home campus, too. Uh, it's a great effort. We don't wanna deny the high school atmosphere, but we also wanna encourage those students to be able to go out there. The, the beauty part of it is that they'll spend two years with BISD, top of instruction, and two years with the college type of instruction, and we will be able to get a high school diploma and an associate's degree at the same time. So, uh, we'll be able to, to name it. We could be able to give it a name. We will have staffing. Naturally, we will have teachers. We will have counselors. We will have a, an administrator out there. So, all those things we're looking forward to. As far as the uniqueness of, uh, of funding, I'm going to ask, because we do have a grant, I probably will be asking the board to set money aside to ensure that this pilot program is successful for at least four years, then once we evaluate it, continue to fund it. But I would suggest that we probably fund it from some type of fund balance to guarantees the, set aside money for this particular endeavor. I think it'll be a great idea to do that.
Mr. Aguilar?
What is the projected date, uh, is it next semester or?
We will be, oh, we, our projected date to open is, is the first day of school for BISD, and, and in the fall will be the same day as the first day of school for them at, uh, at this, this, uh, early, early college high school.
Mr. Lehman?
Yes, our great name would be, uh, BISD at UTB, so. Just to give TSC competition. But, uh, I know, uh, when Dr. Skalkowski was here and we were at a function at the IT building, uh, Dr. Julia Garcia had approached us on something on a magnet scale. This is not the magnet program that she was talking about.
No, this is completely, this-
This is totally something else.
This is an early college high school-
Right.
-that's associated to help our students that probably will be first-generation college girls, that their parents were not able to, to go to college and don't have siblings during college either. This will be the first generation of students that are going to college, be targeted by good, strong B students that are out there, and what you were talking about was the, the one that they currently have, which is the academy for, for, uh, what is the technology, science and technology, and that's, uh, targeted at the top one percent of our student population. This is the, the middle-of-the-road student.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. I, I also agree, it's a fantastic program, and, and Mr. Gonzalez kind of touched on what I was gonna ask. When you say you target the academic middle, is that subjective, objective, or do you have a specific range?
Well, that's something that will work out as we're, um, putting the school together, but, yeah, it's students who are probably at, like Mr. Gonzalez said, in the B average, uh, in their middle school, uh, grades.
But all factors, uh, will be weighed, so, uh, a seventy-nine, uh, point, uh, nine student may not necessarily be disqualified of-
No, they would not be disqualified.
Yeah, all the factors that kinda make up for it a little bit. And, and I'm glad that you're targeting the academic middle because I've, I've, uh, always felt that our, our top students, even though we are very proud of them, you know, they're, uh, bound to be successful, uh, but they, they receive, you know, numerous scholarships and programs and help and whatnot, and oftentimes, we don't give the academic middle, uh, perhaps the attention that they deserve. Uh, I've, I've always tried to kinda push for more scholarships for this particular group, but it seems to be, uh, a little difficult. But it's not, not, not over yet, right? Anyway, any other questions or comments from the board?
I mean, just for clarification, we do not have a magnet program yet, per se, at UTB, or we do?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, okay, you were, I misunderstood you there, yeah. Let's take it back.
No, they have their, they have their own high school.
I understand that, but, I mean, we, that program's still available, or whatever she was talking about, so we can, we can do that then.
Yes, sir.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Hammond, so, Dr. Cavazos.
Thank you.
Moving on to item four, Board Calendar, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Dr. Scuero. We have just a few things that, that, uh, wanna remind you of. Of course, this Thursday and Friday, we have Santa and friends. Um, it's during the day, so if you wanna go during the day, you may do so. Um, but it's gonna have a seven o'clock on Thursday evening to the general public. Uh, I'll be there. Uh, invite all of you to be there. It's a lot of fun. They'll really enjoy it. I haven't seen it. I haven't had a sneak preview from anybody yet, but, uh, I hear it's gonna be great. So, we're really looking forward to that. Also, at, uh, nine o'clock on, on Thursday morning, I'll be having the Superintendent's Coffee at Gonzalez Elementary, or you wanna drop by. Uh, it's been announced that the clusters will be the Rivetta Cluster, so we have a good turnout there at Gonzalez. Um, this, uh, coming Saturday, I'll also have the District High School Science Fair at Rivetta High School. Uh, might as well drop by, have an opportunity. We also have the fourteenth, which is the, the BISD Student Intended Contest at Pace High School. That's a beautiful event if you have the opportunity to go. Uh, of course, not just to say the least on this, on the twenty-first is the last day for all employees. Uh, the twentieth is the last day for students, and, uh, we'll be breaking for the, for the Christmas break. And just wanna remind you, I know you don't, probably don't need this reminder, but the first board meeting, which is scheduled for January one, uh, of two thousand and eight, has been canceled. There will be no board meeting on January first. The first board meeting in, in the two thousand and eight school year, uh, I mean, calendar year is, uh, on the fifteenth. So, um, and the students come back on January the ninth.
Any questions, comments? Question that comes from the board? If not, thank you, Mr. G, G C F. Okay, I thought you said you had lots. Moving on to, uh, public audience? The next, there is no public audience. Great, thank you.
No public audience.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
The tamadas are getting cold.
Tamadas are getting cold, right? Okay, we'll, we'll recess in a little bit, uh, but before we do so, I'd like to move on and, and at least, uh, touch on the consent agenda. Uh, I have received a list from my colleagues indicating there is no need for discussion or deliberation on the following agenda items. Uh, number, these are, are items that will not be discussed, that will be approved on the consent agenda. Uh, five, eight, nine, ten, twelve, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and that is it. Should I repeat them? Uh, I'll just repeat them quickly. Uh, five, eight, nine, ten, twelve, fifteen through twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. Uh, I will undertake a motion to approve the recommendation of administration as reflected by the consent agenda. Motion by Mr. Lehman, seconded by Mr. Aguilar. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. At this point, I'd like to take a, uh- Okay, well, we'll go ahead and then go a little, a little further. Mr. Gonzalez says he's not hungry yet.
(laughing).
So, with that in mind, we'll move on to item, item number six. Uh, recommend changes to the BISD Self-Insurance Health Plan Benefit Summary as recommended by American Administrative Group, the Employees Insurance Committee, and the Insurance Consultant and Administration. I will open the floor for discussion, and I'll, uh, begin with Mr. Cortez.
I just wanted to ask a question. On page twenty-seven, uh, I guess the first column is sets current benefits, and the second column is AAG proposed change. On page twenty-seven, the very, the very last item says expenses are payable at a hundred percent for routine mammogram for individual age thirty-five plus, and the recommended change is, uh, recommend removing age limit for the mammogram. So, that means, uh, the, it's still gonna be paid at a hundred percent and it doesn't, regardless of your age? Is that, is that correct?
That is, that basically, Dr. Scuero, that is basically correct. What, what we've done is that we were restricted by age limit on our previous coverage, that if, if you were not at least thirty-five years old, you would not get a hundred percent paid for on the mammogram. We're, we're removing that, and if it's determined you need a mammogram regardless of your age, you will get one.
That's great.
And it will be paid for. It's a great plus.
Yeah, I, I saw that, and I just wanted to bring that up.
Can I follow up on that?
I wasn't quite sure if I read it correctly.
Mm-hmm, that's what it is.
Mr. Lehman?
I just wanted to follow up, but who, who put the thirty-five age restriction?
That was part of our, our, our benefit plan that we had when we went self-insure.
So, it was a previous consultant consulting, so, so, okay, right.
It had none of this current board or this administration.
On, on any of these changes, is there any cost implications to, to our plan? I mean...
No cost implications. I think we can still cover it in most of our, our benefit packages. It, we just, what we're basically doing is bettering our benefit package to our employees and the covered dependents. That's what we're doing, and I think it's a great thing for this district. When every time we have an opportunity to better the benefits, we're going to do that. We don't think it'll be a, a high financial impact, nothing that we don't think we can cover under our current, uh, payments that we make to our self-insurance.
So, a, 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 after these changes, if approved, they can, any female can go get a, a mammogram regardless of age, as long as they're under the plan with the school district?
That is correct, and, uh, and soon as they're approved, it'll be effective tomorrow morning.
That excludes you, Mr. Cortez.
Well, some men do need mammograms, too.
Yeah. Uh, Mrs. Galvane?
Yes, I wanted to know, uh, let's say we do, uh, go ahead with this, how, uh, will our employees know about these changes, and how soon will they know?
Soon as the, this is approved by the board, then we will send out notices to all the campuses and to all departments saying, "These are the changes to our benefits," and we will make sure that they get those benefits, both in English and Spanish.
Mr. Cortez?
Uh, my, my only question is, I, I didn't see it on here, but, uh, at what point do we discuss, uh, or does the Employees Insurance Committee discuss, uh, changes to their monetary contribution for copayments and, uh, what they pay for dependents or prescription? I know that there was discussion before-
Mm-hmm.
-we brought in, uh, AAG and Health Mart, that afterwards, we would review these, and I haven't, I haven't seen anything come up yet, so I'm just wondering if, if it's been brought up at all.
Yeah, Dr. Scuero, members of the board, yes, we've discussed this. We're certainly gonna be looking at that. We're doing, still doing analysis on that. We certainly, what we certainly don't wanna do is hurt what we personally have. We're doing very, very well with what we have right now. The Insurance Committee is, is also looking, the Employee Insurance Committee, they don't wanna contribute. The employees want to keep it the way it is. They, they don't have to contribute out of their pockets. We wanna make sure that if we're gonna make any adjustments to copays, that it does not impact the fact that, hey, we will no longer be able to cover this by what we're contributing, and then the employee has to contribute a, a certain amount. We don't wanna do that. Uh, so, we, we'll always study it. We'll evaluate it. They've evaluated, and we'll continue to evaluate, and if we sound, if it's a reasonable thing to do, we'll bring it back to the board for approval. But one of the main things that the Employee Insurance Committee, uh, relate to administration was, we don't wanna go and pay toward our coverage. BISD pays a hundred percent, the employee doesn't pay a penny to the premium. They wanna keep it that way. That's the most important thing to them right now.
Mr. Lehman?
We'll continue working on that.
That's, that's a good point, because, uh, I, I think, well, I mean, this is part of it. I mean-
Yes.
-I'm pretty sure that, uh, the three minds came together and, and, and they reviewed the, uh, the plan of benefits, but, uh, in tweaking the, the, the benefit plan, uh, program that we have, uh, doesn't that, uh, become precarious, uh, with the, uh, with the stop laws? Because they, they, they base their stop-loss ones based on, on numbers, the way the, the, the benefit plans were situated. That's what the previous consultant had told us. So, if we need to tweak it, we need to tweak it at least once, uh, very well, and not just change it as we go along through the year.
That is, that is correct.
I mean, I mean, we have to be very cautious. I mean, that's the, I remember that being said, so.
We have to be very cautious on how we tweak any plan. These are good benefits to, to the employees, which we don't anticipate any, any major cost. Um, anytime we, we look at, uh, reducing copays or reducing, then we have to look at how is it gonna financially impact the district, and will it cause it to deplete any type of fund balance that we may have out there. We certainly don't wanna touch that, and we also wanna ensure that the employee doesn't pay out of their pockets at all. So, uh, for the most part, we're looking at it. We will continue to look at it. We always wanna provide the very best we can to all our employees, but we have to work cautiously on that, and, uh, so we'll continue to look at it. This is the first, I told you, we were going to bring it in possibly in sections. This is the first one that everybody agreed to, so we brought it forth to be able to implement it as soon as we can, instead of waiting for, for long term. I think some of this that we brought forth are really needed, and the employees really want it, and everybody was able to agree that this would be something that'd be beneficial and would not be cost prohibitive.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Colunga?
I just, I just wanted to commend the administration and the Insurance, uh, Employee Insurance Committee on having had the, uh, uh, the initiative to, um, to see it come to, uh, completion, to make their recommendation. Uh, the changes overall ha, has, uh, will be of, a great benefit to the, the district employees, uh, to improve health, and, uh, it, uh, shows a proactive approach on the part of the administration to achieve, uh, the, uh, better health goals for the, the district.
Appreciate it. Any other questions or comments? If not, I have motion to approve item six.
Don't move.
Motion by Mr. Lehman, seconded by Mr. Aguilado. All in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. At this point, I'd like to take, now, now Mr. Gonzalez is hungry, so now he's telling me to hurry up.
We've got ten minutes.
I'd like to, uh, call for a fifteen-minute, uh, recess. We will reconvene at, at six fifteen, uh-
About twenty minutes.
Tw- tw- twenty minutes, so we will rec, reconvene at, uh, six twenty, so we don't call recess. We don't call.
I'm wearing recess.
Uh, moving on to item seven, Consideration Discussion and Possible Action of Resolution Number Zero One Five Slash Zero Seven Dash Zero Eight in Support of the Concept of Regional Convention and Event Center in Cameron County, Texas. Uh, I will now open the floor for discussion. Any discussion or questions from the board?
Uh, what is it about, sir?
Mr. Gonzalez?
Item number seven?
Sure.
Thank you, Dr. Scuero, members of the board. Uh, what we've been asked to do is that, uh, we join, as a governmental agency, that we are in support. This is nothing else, no commitment of money, no commitment of anything, but other, other than a commitment of support, that we are supporting a regional convention event center here in Cameron County.
By buses or anything like that?
There's not a, there's not a call for any of our buses or anything, but it would be nice if we get a, a nice convention center here that would do more than a thousand, you know, something that, it would be more like a Dodge Arena-type atmosphere, and, uh, we certainly know, do not have any objections to administration, does not even mind, uh, asking the board to, to adopt this resolution, because it is a resolution solely in support of, no commitment, any funds, or anything like that.
Just like getting, excuse me, just like getting a little support from BISD.
That's correct.
Mr. Lehman?
Well, I didn't read the backup, so, uh, the, uh, when it says- Well, I didn't read the backup, so uh, uh, the uh, when it says regional, what, what does this entail?
Cameron County.
Cameron County, who else?
Cameron County.
Regional, regional. I think Harlingen probably comes to mind.
Well, that's, that's Cameron County.
But I mean, cities, uh, I mean, it's not gonna be in Brownsville proper, it might not be-
It'd be in Harlingen, it could be in Harlingen, it could be San Benito, it could be Brownsville, it could be any of those places.
Not the island, the island house, something like that.
But it's a regional convention center in order for, for us to be able to host large events. And I think that, that the whole purpose of this, uh, letter of support is to say, yes, it would be nice to have one here in this region, in Cameron County, regardless if it's in the B I S D boundaries, or Los Fresnos, or San Benito, or Cam- or uh, or Harlingen, or, or even uh, Salpada Island.
Quality of like the Dodge Arena or something like that?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's what we're headed, doing something that class, world class.
That class, yes.
Any other questions comes from the board? Mr. Cortez?
Yeah, I think it's uh, it's a good thing, if, I mean, if we, if we go into this resolution with the county, I mean, reading, reading the background on it, it uh, I see why, why it would make sense for it to be in our, in our community, whether it's in Harlingen or Brownsville or wherever it, it would be. It, it's, it's obviously something that would stimulate the economy, bring in new jobs. Uh, you know, it's something we've kind of fallen behind in, in those areas down in deep south Texas, you know, and we see what, what happened in Indigo, Indigo County. To bring some of that into Brownsville, if, if there's an opportunity, whether it be in whichever city, I think it'd be a fantastic opportunity for our community.
Mrs. Levan, we're on item seven.
Okay, I just wanted an explanation of the concept, but I guess.
You just missed it.
Okay, no further questions. Do I have a motion to approve item seven?
Move.
Motion by Mr. Cortez, seconded by Mr. Lehman, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
All, uh, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item eleven, recommend approval to pay indicated individual staff stipends totaling one million, one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars from Fund Two Five Five, Mrs. Levan.
Is this uh, put on here because of the Fund Two Five Five, or why wasn't this done when we approved like salaries and stipends, or I got a little confused there?
Mr. Cortez? Thank you, Dr. Scuil, members of the board. This is not part of the compensation plan. This is why we don't do it. This is a, the governor's excellence award, and each individual campus dictates how and who qualifies and how much they qualify for. So we couldn't tell you at the beginning of the year until everything was in, and we actually got the grant to be able to disperse this money. We never wanna let it to become part of the basic compensation plan, because if it is, then you can't take it away. This is strictly grant money, and each campus determines how they're going to award their grants. So that's why we give you the individual names, and some are, just have a dash or a zero by it, because according to their own campus plan, they were, they did not qualify. They didn't meet the qualifications. Uh, so this is strictly a campus. It was approved by, by, by the campus committee, it was approved by the board, of course, and it was approved by the state. So it will never be a part of the compensation plan, but it's really an award of a grant, and it's based on the each individual campus plan.
Any other questions or comments on item eleven? If not, that motion to approve. Motion by Mrs. Levan, seconded by Mr. Aguilar, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item thirteen, recommend approval to enter into memorandum of understanding between Go Centers from Brownsville I S D and the Michigan Texas Brownsville Texas Health College Performing Agency and participating schools under Brownsville Penn School District for services for the two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight school year. Services subject uh, to be rendered at no cost to the district, Mrs. Levan.
Uh, just so that uh, the public would know, I, I did wanna ask, what is a Go Center?
Thank you, uh, Dr. Scuil, members of the board. The Go Center is, is a place where, at each high school that we have for students to go to, to be, get, to get assistance as to how to go to college, financial aid, and everything else that goes with the process of going to a, to a college, whether it's local or major university, or anywhere in the nation. And what we do is we, we host the Go Centers along, and we get input not only from ourselves, but from the university. And this gives, affords the opportunity for students and their parents to come by and find out how they can enroll, what is the process, uh, filling in applications, getting online, having computers there, and also doing financially.
And this is at all high schools?
Yes, ma'am. We have them at all the high schools.
Any other questions or comments? If not, that motion to approve item thirteen. Motion by Mr. Lehman, seconded by Mrs. uh, Aguilar, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item fourteen, recommend approval for the administration to continue collaborative services, service agreements with the historic Brownsville Museum Gladys Porter Zoo, Brownsville Historical Association Stillman House Museum, Brownsville Art League Museum, and the Brownsville Barnstormers Flying Museum in the amount not to exceed one hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars from budgeted local maintenance fund. This is an annual agreement, Mrs. Levan.
I just wanted to say hats off, uh, to sup- uh, that we're supporting our museums and the Gladys Porter Zoo. And these are in themselves educational centers. Our students go there. They do uh, view the museums, they do view the zoo, and uh, I'm glad we, we're doing a collaborator, collaborative uh, effort on this.
Thank you.
So much tamales there.
Thank you, Mrs. Levan. I, I fully agree, uh, on, on both the efforts and the tamales.
Mr. Aguilar? Mr. Aguilar?
Yes, I, I think we are doing a great service to our community. Uh, during the uh, trying to get our museum get, uh, started, we had ample support from the several museums in our community. They spent hours, I'm telling you, about a week, but sometime on Saturdays and in, in the evenings, helping us, giving us that support that we needed. So it is well spent, really. And besides, our young people get free tickets.
Mm-hmm.
And also staff development also get a, are they free now, or are they still uh?
Preserving.
So long term, it's, it's beneficial to us.
Good, good. Any other questions or comments? If not, that motion to approve item fourteen. Motion by Mrs. Levan, seconded by Mr. Aguilar, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. We move on to item ten, closed meeting as pursuant to technical code section five five one point zero seven one and point zero seven two at sec. Uh, board now rec- uh, goes to closed session. It's a closed session. Moving on to item number twenty-six, uh, recommend approval to, I'm, I'm sorry, uh-
Dr. Scuil? At this time, uh, superintendent, uh, superintendent of schools, I'd like to go ahead and request that uh, item twenty-six uh, be tabled indefinitely.
Okay, well, uh, there's a recommendation by administration to postpone item twenty-six indefinitely. Uh, but that-
Move to table indefinitely.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Lehman, seconded by Mr. Aguilar, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item twenty-eight, consultation with attorney regarding pending or threatened litigation matters, do I have a motion?
Yes, sir, uh, Mr. Board President.
Lehman?
Move to approve attorney's fees and settlement of the following T A special education hearings, be it T E A docket number zero two three dash S E dash one zero zero seven, uh, dealing with Carlos M., uh, T E A docket number zero five three dash S E dash eleven O seven, referencing Robert V., and T E A docket number zero two two dash S E dash one zero zero seven, referencing Julian S. And the amounts discussed in executive session.
Motion by Mr. Lehman, seconded by Mr. Aguilar, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Uh, is there another mo- uh, motion for legal? No? Then we move on to item thirty, real property. Uh, do I have a motion to approve item thirty?
Uh, Dr. Scuil, if I may, I just wanna add to that uh, request of the recommendation that be contingent on favorable environmental studies.
Uh, the item must be read, sir.
And clear title.
Uh, should we read the item or not?
You don't have to, but you can.
You don't have to, okay.
Okay, um, Mr. Mr. Uh-
For the record?
Saldaña, would you like to read the item, the revised item for just for the record?
I think for the record, it should be read. Recommend, recommend the purchase of real estate for the amount of one hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollar, one hundred and seventy-nine thousand, five hundred dollars, uh, described as one point three acre tract of land, block eight, lots one through six in the Garden Park subdivision in Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. The one point three acres is located adjacent to the western boundary of James Pace High School, contingent on favorable, in, uh, a favorable environmental study and clear title to be supplied by the seller.
Can I have a motion by Mr. Lehman to uh? Do I have a motion to approve, do I have a motion to approve item thirty? Motion by Mr. Aguilar, seconded by Mr. Cortez, all in favor, raise your right hand. Uh, okay, motion passes unanimously with Mr. Lehman abstaining. Okay, uh, announcements. The next scheduled board meeting, uh, the board trust is on Tuesday, September the eighteenth, two thousand and seven, here at five thirty P M. Mr. Gonzalez, any other announcements?
Yes, uh, just one more announcement. We do have a board workshop on the eleventh and thirteenth at five thirty P M. Here at the board, boardroom.
Great. Any other announcements? Mr. Ju- Mr. Cortez?
Yeah, I just wanted to uh, uh, congratulate the kids. I was at the parade last night, and I saw the students. They did a fantastic job. And uh, Mr. Gonzalez, in case you weren't aware, one of your A A's did a great job also. He was marching with Hudson last night, so I think that's his, his first walk in a parade. So, great job.
Somebody got invited.
Dr. Scuil?
And, and I'm pretty sure you, you saw the eighty buses we used to transfer all-
I saw them, I was in, I was in such a traffic.
That's where your overtime goes, all right?
I hope, I hope we get invited next time to be in the parade.
And you're not, uh, no further announcements. Do I have a motion to adjourn? A motion by Mrs. Levan, seconded by Mr. Aguilar, all in favor, raise your right hand. This meeting is adjourned. Have a good night.